Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 21st, 2025 General Meeting of the Clifton Board of Education. Please stand for the flag salute and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation in one liberty, equal rights and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Uche.
Ms. Basford.
Here.
Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova.
Here.
Dr. Danny.
Here.
Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with a quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate, lifelong learners who are responsible and productive citizens, contributing to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right to the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Clifton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the city clerk's office, Clifton Public Library, Administration Building, senior citizens nutrition center, on cable TV, in the local press, on the district's website, and mailed to presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This meeting will be tape-recorded in accordance with policy 0168. Do we have a student representative report this evening? Okay, they're still on vacation, so we'll see them, I'm sure, in September. We're going to start off with a presentation by Ms. Kusilevich's team on the 2025 summer programs. It's an overview of this summer's programs. So we welcome the coordinators and aspiring administrators that are with us this evening.
It's such a pleasure to be with you here today. On behalf of all of the principals, coordinators, and aspiring administrators sitting at the back, I would like to thank you on their behalf, because these programs that we ran this summer, and most summers, are only as a result of a combination of the board's support and the multiple funding sources that we're able to leverage, such as our federal funding. So thank you so very much to you, to our buildings who hosted our programs, and I'm going to turn this over to our administrators, starting with the Title I program with the Jump Start and Academic Readiness. I'm inviting up Ms. Juarbe.
Good evening, Clifton Board of Education Commissioners, Central Administration, and the Clifton One community. This year, our summer programs focused on providing meaningful experiences that extended learning beyond the traditional school year. These programs supported academic growth, strengthened social and emotional skills, and offered enrichment opportunities that kept students excited about learning. Tonight, our coordinators and supervisors will share highlights from each site, showcasing both the successes and the unique experiences that took place. Before they begin, I want to sincerely thank them for their outstanding work. From the early planning stages through daily execution and to the successful conclusion, their dedication has been the foundation of these programs. I am incredibly proud of our staff's commitment and our students' enthusiasm, and I believe you will see the impact of these efforts in our presentation today. Thank you for your time, and now I invite up Ms. Suarez from our Jump Start program. Thank you.
Good evening. This summer, the Jump Start program took place at the School 12 Annex from July 1st through July 29th. Our goal was to help rising kindergarten students build the academic, social, and emotional skills they need to start school strong. We were proud to welcome 40 students into the program. Throughout the month, they worked on following directions, sharing, expressing themselves, and learning to use classroom materials. They also practiced recognizing letters, numbers, colors, and their own names in print, all while building important early math and reading skills. The program also included PBSIS activities, fun theme days as seen on the slides, water balloon activities, and special visitors during the career week. A big highlight was the Clifton Police Department's visit, which the children absolutely loved. Most importantly, our teachers shared that they were able to accomplish a great deal with the students. They feel confident that these rising kindergarteners truly received the jump start they needed for a successful school year ahead. A heartfelt thank you to our teachers and staff for their dedication, and to all the visitors for helping make this summer program a success. Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Fusatola, and this is Matt Stewart. Together, we were the coordinators for the Title I K through 5 Summer Program under the leadership of Ms. Juarbe, our summer program principal. The program served students previously enrolled in a Title I school across the district. It consisted of 10 classes at School 11 and two combination classes at the Boys and Girls Club. Our total enrollment was 137 students.
All right, so our program focused on math and literacy curriculum. Basically, it was designed to remediate and strengthen essential skills so students could be successful at the next grade level. In Language Arts Literacy, we focused on reading and writing, and our math curriculum was more hands-on. Language Arts Literacy, for grades K to 2, we used a program called Foundations Ready to Rise that focused on high-frequency word recognition, phonemic awareness, comprehension fluency, and we used a program called RAS Kids, which used interactive text in order to foster independent reading. Grades 3 to 5, we used Create Trait Plus, which they had a lot of STEM and science topics in the reading. We also used digital literacy support with the Myon program. Mathematics, we used Hand to Mind, and that brought not only math, literacy, science, STEM concepts to life, we used Imagine Math and Imagine Facts, which are also programs that students use throughout the year. Here are some pictures of our kids learning during the summer. We also had a breakfast program and lunch. So in the morning, students would have brown bag lunch and bring it to the classroom, and then in the afternoon for lunch, they would eat in the cafeteria.
Additionally, one of our highlights was the PBSIS program, where we asked the students to shine bright all summer. This represented the students being safe, honest, inclusive, neighborly, and enthusiastic. We used diamond dollars, which we were able to give out when observing our shine characteristics. Students who had the regular incentive tickets were able to place them in weekly raffles, and our winners were able to spin our Wheel of Prizes, which they were able to receive various things, such as picks from the prize box, personalized keychains, personalized drawstring bags, behind-the-scenes passes, and other fun rewards. We had themed spirit days, just like we do every year, and we had an Engage in Career Week, where we had our district therapy dog Chewy visit. Dr. Pickley, who is a pediatric dentist from Clifton, he came for a visit and also brought goodie bags for the students, so we were grateful to him. The Clifton Police also joined us, and for our astronomy career week presentation, not only did we have the blow-up planetarium to go over the different constellations, but we incorporated using the dome this year to project cartoon videos that had complex concepts, be a lot more fun and easier to understand for our younger students. You can click on that bottom box to get a feel for it on your own time if you choose to. Along with that, at the very end of the program, we had our annual shine celebration, which consisted of raffles, team-building activities, and for our attendance initiative, we recognized our perfect attendance students, and we did bigger raffles for bigger prizes, just to encourage and reward them. It was a wonderful program, and we are very thankful to our staff, to the custodial teams, and to everyone who participated. Now I would like to call up Ms. Tavara.
We did the Title III program in School 12. The multilingual learning program enhances English proficiency. The key areas are language development, academic support, parent and family engagement. We had over 126 students enroll in the program. The Language Arts Literacy program focuses on getting the students ready for reading and writing. The math framework focuses the students on labeling on their previous grades, but more importantly, getting them ready for the next grade level. Here are some pictures of the students in the classroom. With their theme days, we did Rainbow Week, where we had the rainbow, red, yellow, blue, the Spirit Week and Career Week as well. Through the PBSIS program, every week we did a raffle where students received a gift bag, and at the end of the program, the students also received a gift bag with full supplies for next year's school. The Career Week, we had the Health Department for Clifton, Police Department, and Ms. Regosa with Kobe. The Family Literacy Program ran alongside with the Title III program. We had two sessions, the beginners and intermediate, where we had 18 parents, and the intermediate and advanced, where we had eight parents. Every day, the students received a lunch and a breakfast. The community members also were provided with breakfast and lunch through the Breakfast by Bell Initiative. We thanked the teachers, professionals, counselors, security specialists, the clinic, and our amazing secretaries. Thank you. Now I'm going to introduce Jump Start.
Thank you so much. Ms. Fuglis was not able to be here to talk about Minds in Motion, but we had a full wraparound Minds in Motion program with all of the STEAM activities. The difference with Minds in Motion and our regular Title I is that these children do stay all day, and on Fridays, they have the opportunity to take multiple trips. We had 74 students from Minds in Motion enrolled. Some of the activities that they participated in were balloons over Broadway, how to build a hug, cartography, chair building, the sky's the limit building rockets, and 3D interactive mazes, the arts, a parent day to include our parents and their multiple Friday field trips, which included going down to the shore, doing some oceanography, and we had some in-house presentations, like some of our other programs, and here we see our animals, which is always a hit, as well as some robotics activities. Minds in Motion, as always, we're grateful to all of the support that we get for that, specifically the 21st Century Learning Center grant funds, which fund that. Thank you so much, and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Hayward and Mr. Rocco for our Title I Middle School Academy.
I'm Michael Rocco, and this is Lisa Hayward, and we did our Title I Middle School Academy program. Our Summer Academy is a free program, open to all current middle school students in Clifton, offering a unique opportunity to experience hands-on approach to the middle school curriculum. This program focused in on strengthening essential skills in math and language arts, exploring exciting social studies and science topics through a STEM lens.
Okay, so some of our highlights, many of the students that attended this year were repeat enrollees from Summer Academy last year, which was wonderful to see. We also had a very high number of first-time students attending our program. This program included new hands-on STEM activities for language arts. Another highlight, our staff is really great about collaborating with each other and creating cross-curricular lessons and activities for all of the subjects, and our PBSIS rewards students for exceeding our classroom expectations. Oh, you want to go back, sorry. The total enrollment for our program was 111 students. In our curriculum, we covered language arts. These are very in-depth slides, of course, but we had classes for language arts, math, the integrated, which is a version of a social studies course with language arts and STEM activities built in, and then our math program as well.
And our STEM program.
Yeah, and our STEM/tech course as well.
Some of our, as you see from the slide, our students really enjoyed being at the program. We had a lot of first time, but a lot of returning students, and they really enjoyed the integrated program, which introduced a lot of hands-on activities in building models of chariots and a lot of different catapults. And we had a 94% that they would like to return. So some of our pictures and highlights, they even built websites where they could play games right in our STEM class.
If you wanted to click and try some of their games, you can. They coded their own video games, which is pretty cool.
And one of the big changes we made this year is in our Language Arts program, where we integrated a hands-on activity where they would build a model, they would be studying some animals, and they would build a model of it as well. So a lot of hands-on opportunities for the students.
So for our PBSIS program and incentives, we had the teachers nominate students at the end of the program for outstanding attendance, star mathematician for all the subjects. So some of these student certificates are seen here on the slide. We had theme days. At the end of the program, we had students choose a reward that they'd like to do. So we had Lego building contests, challenges, we had make-your-own-friendship bracelets. So the kids really enjoyed the end of our program activities as well.
We served breakfast and lunch to our students, Grab and Grow Breakfast, where they ate in their classrooms, and the lunch, we were able to use the cafeteria in the high school. That's our staff, and we're really thankful for everybody at the high school for accommodating us, for everything that we needed. And one of the successes of our programs was the constant communication between staff and the coordinators. It was just a great opportunity overall for us to really grow as a program and really ran smoothly that way.
Yes, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call up...
The IC program?
Ms. Vitillo.
Ms. Vitillo. Ms. Vitillo.
Good evening. I'm Jason Leschmidt, supervisor of the arts, and I'm excited to share highlights from this year's IC Summer Program. With the support of our incredible teachers, administrative team, and program coordinators, Ms. Vitillo, Ms. Surratsky, Mr. Louie, and myself, we delivered one of the most dynamic learning experiences that Clifton offers each summer. From July 1st to the 24th, Woodrow Wilson welcomed 228 students in grades 1 through 8. Over 16 days, students explored academics, the arts, and technology with support from 31 staff members and 42 high school TAs. Students in grades 1 through 3 stayed with dedicated teachers, enjoying structured days with art and music technology enrichment. Older students in grades 4 through 8 customized their schedules, switching between classes based on their interests. This year, the IC program welcomed 228 campus from across the district, one of our strongest turnouts yet. This number reflects both the growing demand for summer enrichment and the success of programs designed to meet the diverse learning needs of Clifton students. IC offered students a wide range of creative and academic courses, including math, art, songwriting with ukulele, and history makers, and additional offerings included coding, musical theater, band and strings, and our newest courses, music technology and theater production/stagecraft. A major highlight was our final day celebration. Students performed live ukulele, strings, and band concerts, and brought the stage to life with a full-on production of Moana Jr. We also hosted the IC Museum Walk, transforming the hallways into galleries filled with student-created art, science projects, and original designs. Families, staff, and students came together to celebrate creativity, innovation, and student achievement, making this event one of the most memorable parts of the summer. This summer also featured special theme weeks, designed to keep students engaged and energized. These themed events encouraged creativity, fostered collaboration, and built camp spirit, adding an extra layer of excitement to the program. This program wouldn't have been possible without our teachers, admin team, secretaries, security specialists, clinic staff, and more than 40 high school teaching assistants. Their dedication created a safe, inspiring space for students to grow. This summer, 228 students didn't just attend a program, they experienced something transformative. Thank you for your time and support, and we truly hope to see many of your children join us next summer at the IC program. Thank you.
I'm Stephen Storson, and this is Eva Rogazinski, and we were the coordinators for the ESL Summer Enrichment Program, grades 6 through 12. This was a free, wonderful program that our students had the ability to attend. They received instruction in language arts, mathematics, science, technology, and social Our peak enrollment was 132 students this summer, and we had a very diverse population, with sixth graders, who were just beginners, and we also had up to rising seniors, who were advanced students. So it was a very, very diverse mix of students. Our curriculum was based on these weekly themes that you see on the screen, so the lessons and the activities all revolved around these great themes. You see some pictures here, students hard at work. A lot of the activities were collaborative, hands-on, very interactive. Students put together some tremendous projects, the two on the right were just using Play-Doh, and we see some more images here. And some of the projects were on Chromebooks, some of them were paper-based. Some highlights from our program included a walking field trip to the Clifton Art Center. The Art Center was gracious enough to have us. They had students complete a scavenger hunt, and also taught them about the history of the site itself. We were also able to fundraise some money and put it together, and our high school students were able to do Parkway Lanes and enjoyed some bowling and pizza, and really did build some good camaraderie among them. I mentioned our theme weeks before. One of our theme weeks was Animal Week, and what better way to cap it off than with a special visit from Solo, one of our therapy dogs? Kids just loved it, so did the staff. Our final theme was careers and career exploration, and we have some pictures from Career Day. We split it into two different days, and we had some great speakers from the district. They talked about stuff they do within the district and also outside the district. It was a very worthwhile experience, and we just are grateful for the great staff we had that worked with us, including the teachers, the volunteers for Career Day, our security specialists, secretaries, and the school nurses. Thank you so much for your time. ESY is coming up next.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Hall, here with Mr. Andrew Rosado, and we were two of eight coordinators for the ESY program, which is one of the biggest summer initiatives offered to Clifton students. We had roughly 300 students enrolled in the program, and it spanned from pre-K to 12th grade. The goal of the program is to ensure continuity of instruction and support services for students with IEPs or needing extra assistance, whether it's curricular or related services, such as OT, PT, and speech therapy. All of the curriculum is aligned to the individual goals outlined in every student's IEP, which is very specialized instruction given to the students in the classrooms. Throughout the program, we had countless paraprofessionals assisting our wonderful teachers, ensuring that continuity for our students, and providing the structure and support that they needed to continue their progression forward and limit any sort of regression in the gap between the academic school year between June and September. Throughout the program, we had theme days, as did the other summer programs, which were pervasive throughout our students' attendance and the different initiatives set forth in the classrooms by the teachers. Typical day started with breakfast, such as the other programs, followed by an instructional period, a small brain break, and a snack, followed by an additional instructional period, and then lunch was provided with an exit activity summarizing the day's activities that the students went through each day. And we have some pictures here, as you can see, and that's it. Thank you so much for the opportunity and for all of the programs.
So once again, on behalf of all of these amazing teachers, coordinators, principals, custodians, the buildings themselves, we're just so grateful that we're able to provide these opportunities for all of our students, and it would not be possible without everyone involved, including our transportation team that gets our students between some of the sites, shuttling them. So it's a team effort, it takes the entire One Clifton community. Thank you once again.
Thank you, Janine, and thank you to the entire team for giving us that great overview. It's hard to believe, a lot of us think nothing happens in the summertime, but it's amazing the depth and variety of support and learning that you provide to our students, and we thank you so much for that. Does anyone on the board have any questions they'd like to present to anyone here at this point? Yes, Mr. Canova, Commissioner Canova?
I just had two quick questions. One is, in all these programs except ICE, it's all Clifton students, right?
Yes.
So those large numbers of attendance, we're really all kids from our town?
Yes.
Yes, those are almost exclusively Clifton students. Only IC might have some students from out of town, because those students for IC pay tuition.
Yep. And then the other thing is, there was a lot of software mentioned in the beginning. Are we...
Are we, I know we were talking about moving to different softwares or evaluating other softwares. Was that a part of a pilot that we're using the data from to determine what software we're going to use?
Actually, the software that was being used is what is already currently typically being used in most of our programs, but we do evaluate those on a yearly basis based on usage and also primarily student outcomes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, again, thank you so much for sharing your hard work this summer. You have, what, a week and a half, maybe, not even, less than a week to enjoy for yourselves, so please, please do do that. Okay, we're going to move to Board Committee reports. The first is Facilities. Commissioner Brunsack, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Meeting was on August 13th, 2025. Those present were Commissioner Bassford, Commissioner Ciano, excuse me, Commissioner Ciano was not present, President Paris was present, Mr. Jengaro was present, Mr. Shahada, Mr. Capizzi, Mr. Marchionne, Mr. Torano, and Mr. Rodney Watkins. Meeting start time was 4:00 PM. Meeting end time was 4:55. Items that were of discussion were referendum update, power systems. All buildings have been switched over to new power. Christopher Columbus will be completed by Friday. Gym air conditioning, all units installed. Schools nine and 15 are complete, pending activation and balancing. Mechanical parts, some components require replacement under warranty. B&amp;G updates for Maple Valley, first-floor hallway. Flooring and ceiling tile installation are nearly complete. Classroom painting is underway this week. Basement music room flooring scheduled for installation this weekend. Second-floor work for the media center and hallway to stairwell A begins Monday. Building signage has been installed. Window signage nearing completion. Grass cutting at Maple Valley began August 11th. Seala B cleanup completed, Seala S cleanup completed. High school cleanup in progress to be finished next week. Two days dedicated to grass cutting, remaining time focused on major cleanups. School eight gym flooring supplies delivered today and tomorrow. Installation begins Thursday following gym use. School 13, Room Eight flooring. Flooring not yet delivered, but project remains on track for completion before school starts. Rental of buildings, movies. District has received a significant number of movie filming requests over the past month. Mr. Shahada sought clarification on the board's position regarding such requests. If the board is favorable, he proposed that he authorize to approve these uses, provided they comply with all policy guidelines, with retroactive approval to be granted at the next scheduled board meeting. This approach would address timing challenges, as the submission and required access dates for those requests often do not align with board meeting schedules. Committee was in favor. Therapy dog. The committee reviewed a request to designate a small portion of Maple Valley Middle School grass field as a therapy dog park. This enclosed area would provide Clifton's therapy dogs and their handlers with a safe space for ongoing training, as well as a secure environment for the dogs to relax and enjoy when they are not actively servicing students. The committee was in favor, and administration will be moving forward. Billings to the city. As of today, no response has been received from the city regarding the letter previously sent per the board's direction. Invoices will be issued to the city for all events they have hosted, effective August 24th, 2025, with charges retroactive to July 1st, 2025. To date, the city has incurred $167,050, and official invoices will be sent on the effective date noted above. Stadium projects. Locker room power connection pending. All other work completed. Bleachers installation complete, awaiting garage door gates. Amphitheater pavers scheduled for installation tomorrow. Seating is complete. Railings and landscaping installation and final landscaping is in progress. Canopy is on order, delayed due to a long lead time. Loading dock, the roof, steel, and electrical work is in progress. Doors delayed due to a long lead time. School 17, AC installation nearly complete. Controls and graphics currently being installed. Units expected to be fully operational by September. New business includes discussion held regarding the stadium concession stand. Administration is reviewing options. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. I just want to reiterate through you, Mr. Brunsack, to our superintendent. All classrooms will be fully functioned with the air conditioning, correct, for September?
From your lips to God's ears. That is the plan? I expect that to happen, but I can't sit here today and promise you that 100% of the classrooms will be operational because we've had some hiccups, but we should be in really, really good shape.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner Brunsack. Commissioner, oh, Vice President Santiago, could you please read residency and security minutes?
Sure. Thank you, President Paris. Residency, Security, and Technology Committee. The meeting took place on Thursday, August 14th, and began at 5:03. In attendance from administration were Mr. Jengaro, Mr. Doctor. Board of Education members in attendance were myself, Commissioner Canova, Commissioner Ciano, and President Paris. Mr. Doctor explained that pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 are full, and wait lists have been created. He also stated that the district is looking into an alternative to Safety Town, which is being offered by New Jersey Transit, free of charge. Finally, Mr. Doctor explained the cooperative training being conducted during the summer with Clifton Police and Fire in regard to a potential emergency incident. In regard to the lack of cellphone coverage in various buildings, President Paris stated that a letter has been sent to a member of the State Assembly, and meetings will be taking place with various cellphone company representatives. The meeting adjourned at 5:21 PM. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Santiago. And the last minutes we have is Education and Special Education. Commissioner Dr. Danny, please.
Yes. August 13th, the meeting began at 6:05 PM. The commissioners from the Board of Ed present were myself, President Paris, Ms. Suarez, and Mr. Canova. From the administration side was Janina Kusalevich, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Mark Jengaro, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Ahmed Shahada, Assistant Superintendent of Business, Heather Rotolo, Director of Special Services, Dr. Valerie Kropenek, ELA Supervisor K-8. Special education updates from Ms. Rotolo. Ms. Rotolo reviewed some of the current activities that are taking place right now in the Special Services Department. She provided an update on the ESY program, which ended on 8/12/2025. Referral numbers, 264 for PSD and 289 for K through 12. For the school year, they were discussed. Integration and publicizing the multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, which combines intervention and referral services, INRS, and positive behavioral supports in schools, PBSIS. Should House support more students in the least restrictive environment of general education and lower these numbers? Handle with Care training is taking place for staff. Thirty-two staff, including 29 special education teachers, participated in week-long certification in Orton-Gillingham to increase the number of teachers certified in providing explicit multisensory instruction and reading interventions. Hiring continues for special education teachers, temporary teacher placement, and paraprofessional vacancies. Collaboration between Clifton Health Department for Autism Parent Support Groups will be held at School 16 in September and October. Extraordinary aid funding has been received. Action was informational. General education, new NJ DOE mandates, literacy screening by Dr. Kropenek, and she provided information about new legislation, PL 2024-C52, that requires school districts to administer valid, reliable literacy screeners to students in kindergarten through third grade. This initiative aims to identify students at risk of reading difficulties early and to provide targeted interventions and notify parents or guardians of screening results within 30 days of the screening period. Clifton will be discontinuing the use of the existing Early Literacy Card and implementing STAR Early Literacy Assessments, obtained through a New Jersey DOE grant to meet this mandate and serve students' needs. Instruction and intervention is built into the district foundational reading program foundations, and intervention support will be provided through Fun and Focus Kits and by basic skills and reading specialists. Dr. Kropenek is currently completing application for the NJ DOE Coach Grant to fund a literacy coach for grades six through 12, and the NJ DOE Rise Grant to provide literacy intervention to the neediest subgroups, six through nine, and the NJ DOE Impact Grant to provide high-quality literacy material for kindergarten, and the NJ DOE Lift Grant to support preschool literacy through community engagement. Action was informational. New Jersey SBA Proposed Resolution. Ms. Kusalevich shared that the NJ SBA takes proposals for areas on which to focus for the year. Proposed resolutions, which have been drafted for review and submission, include universal free lunch and special education out-of-district placement, fully funding tuition/transportations, including costs and oversight of out-of-district tuition rates. The committee reviewed the two resolutions to format and began discussing a possible resolution to address recent and future cuts to federal funding, including ESCA and IDEA for the 26, 27-year. A draft will be discussed at the next education, special education, meeting. Action was informational. EPATH Model Demonstration Project. Ms. Kusalevich shared information on EPATH. This is a model demonstration project funded through the Office of Special Education Programs, OSEP, to address the needs for equitable family partnerships between schools and underserved families of children with disabilities by leveraging a school's existing multi-tiered system of support, MTSS framework, to center the voices and needs of these families, with specific focus on and establish equitable partnerships across the school and home EPATH. EPATH is a collaboration between the Northeast PBIS Yukon Parent Centers C-SPAN and NJ PBSIS. Schools eight, 14, and 17 are all participating. Action was informational. Federal funding update. Ms. Kusalevich shared an update on federal funds, which were initially withheld by the US DOE in Title II, III, IV, and the 21st Century Learning Centers. New Jersey filed a lawsuit to fight this withholding, which would have been over $1 million for Clifton. While these funds have been restored, our full ESCA allocation was still reduced. We anticipated receiving the same as 2024 to 2025, which was $5,732,393. While the titles were reinstated, reductions to Title I and Title IV led to a total of $645,066, resulting in an allocation of $5,087,327. In the 26 to 2027 federal budget, Title II, III, and IV, and the 21st Century Learning Centers have been budgeted as zero. We have been informed of potential significant reductions to Title I and IDEA in the following year as well. Action informational. Meeting adjourned 7:15. Any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Bassford?
Yes. What outcomes are expected from Handle with Care, and how will success be measured? I'm not a fan of the program. Do they still use my favorite word, aversives, for restraint? And that's my two questions.
I don't want to put Janine on the spot, but are you comfortable answering that question?
Ms. Rotolo is here.
Otherwise, I can get you an answer, Mrs. Bassford.
Thank you, because that was, I'm not a fan, because you know my background, so I'm really not a fan. The other question I have, would you mind me asking another question?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Will the Autism Parent Support Group be expanded to other schools after this September-October area? And will it continue after October? Is the grant only for September and October?
That's also Heather. Annie, Heather is here.
If, Mr. Paris, if you don't mind, Ms. Rotolo is here. She's happy to speak to both of those. Okay. We'll give her the floor.
Thank you. It's open for all parents. It's just held at school 16.
Ms. Rotolo, would you walk over to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Collaboration, this collaboration between the Health Department and us is just being held at School 16. It's open for all families. They just have to register.
Can you turn the mic on?
Is it also all grade levels?
Try one more time.
Okay. There we go. Okay, the collaboration between us and Clifton Health Department for children with autism, for their parents, for the support group, is open to anyone in Clifton, and technically, I think they would take anyone else, but it is held at School 16, so it's not only for School 16 parents. And it's open for all grade levels. They have a little, they're doing a grant, so there is a little bit that they they check if your child's in such-and-such class, but we don't, we're not managing that. We're just supporting them.
And it just says September, October. I'm just wondering if it's.
Every, it's every Wednesday for six weeks, so the flyer has all the dates on it and stuff like that.
I would really think maybe we should look at that program and see what kind of support it gets, and maybe, because it's a grant, you know, grants end, they begin and end, so, well, I would like to really know about the success of the program to see maybe what we can do in the future and bring it to the Education Committee.
Could I respond to that?
Sure.
Is that okay? So we did four weeks last year. We started it with them, and they had a nice turnout, and the parents gave them very good feedback, and they gave us good feedback, but it wasn't specific. They got specific feedback. They just said the parents were very happy. It was kind of more like a counseling session for parents, so they just said parents were happy to have an audience. We went there to support, so we had a supervisor go every week to kind of have that collaboration, and the parents were super happy. So now they went to six weeks for this year.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Ms. Rotolo?
Yes.
Are you comfortable answering the question about Handle with Care, or do we want to just get back to Mrs. Bassford?
Could I, could I get back to you on that? But it's just the training, and I know we're.
No, I understand. I just want to know how we're going to measure the outcomes. I, the part of that is restraint, and I understand that we're very, we handle it a different way. I'm just not a fan of the program.
I know.
You know how I feel about it.
I know.
We've had lengthy conversations about this.
We'll get you an answer.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We just switched protocols. We were using Crisis Prevention Institute, CPI, and we just switched it to Handle with Care, and the staff seems to like that a little better, but I'll get back to you on the data and all that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rotolo. Thank you, Mr. Rotolo. Anyone else? Any other questions? All right, we're going to move on to public recognition. This portion of the meeting is open to the residents and non-residents of Clifton for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Clifton Public School District. Residents and non-residents are requested to sign the register provided for this purpose and to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Matthew, we usually start with the online, or is there anyone online this evening?
Yes.
Yes, we do have one person online.
Are we connected, Matthew?
We are connected. It is not unmuting.
Ms. Potter, you are. Ms. Potter, you are on the public recognition portion of Clifton Board of Education meeting. You have the floor.
Ms. Potter.
Ms. Potter, are you there?
Can everybody hear me?
Now we can, yes.
The mic's unmuted. Hi, I'm Jackson Potter from 651 of Manhattan Avenue. Um, so.
Ms. Potter, you are.
No, I'm unmuted.
Public recognition portion of Clifton Board of Education meeting. Up for the floor.
Okay. So, good morning, Board. Um, yes, I am here. Can you hear me? Okay, so. I figured, give me one second. Okay, there we go. I figured out what was going on. Okay, so, I started a meeting, I think it was June 9th, we had a meeting to get a nurse on my daughter's bus regarding, um, her seizures have been escalating, and I brought this up with many different people in the district. I have a lot of doctor's notes, and I got it all situated ahead of meeting. It was my understanding that I would figure out what was going on in August. I would, you know, communicate with everybody in August, figure out what's going on. Supposedly, my understanding that, um, there'd be no nurse. The issue I have of this right now is that her rescue medication needs to be, when she had a seizure, administered no more or less than five minutes. I was told that if she were to have a seizure on the bus, they would call 911. I said, the issue with that is that where the seizures are she has now are very tonic. I have been told by the doctors that because they have transferred into this, if the emergency medication is not given to her, it is extremely life-threatening. Um, if not administered, it could cause death with everything medically that is going on with her. Um, I am just quite confused with everything because I've gone through all the protocols, I've gone through everything that has needed to got done, all the paperwork, all the doctor's notes, all the phone calls. Um, I thought in June I had this situated. I didn't have to bring it up last meeting. I had other concerns. Now my concern is school starting. We have no nurse. We have no safety or knowledge that if she goes on the bus, she's going to be okay. It's a brand-new school. It's a brand-new everything for her. I don't know if that's going to bother her or trigger something or stir up her anxiety because, um, she has idiop, it's called idiopathic epilepsy. Um, with that being said, there's three different parts of it. There's the absence seizure, the tonic, and the grand mal. We're out of the grand mal, but now she's having the tonic. She has slightly seizures, which are the absence seizures, all day long. All we want to do is make sure that she's safe on the bus. During school, the seizure action plan, never been an issue. Being on the bus is our main concern for her to be safe. Doctor wants a nurse. I put in the request, did everything, trying to do everything that needs to be done. It's just, you know, if someone had told me, say, if they've been trying to figure it out all summer, say if somebody like got back to me in like July, well, I've tried calling and going and doing what needs to be done, I would have called the doctor and be like, hey, let's go through the insurance, let's do this. But instead of that, I called to speak to the person I had the meeting with, going, no, we agreed on an aide. I said, no, we agreed on a nurse. That was the whole point of the meeting. I know what was said. I don't need to like be told differently. And then proceeded to be told that it's a privilege to have the bus. No, 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 it's not a privilege to have the bus. It's part of her IEP. Um, I also stated that a nurse needs to be on the bus for the safety. I said, I don't feel comfortable figuring on a bus without the nurse or the medication because all the breakthrough seizures that she's been having, it's not good. Well, that's your prerogative. I said, you don't have to, you can drive her. Excuse me? I go, first of all, the whole point is to have the bus, but how would you like me to get her there? Drive? I don't have a car. Do you want me to Uber there? Are you going to reimburse me for the Uber to make sure that she's safe? No. No answer, right? Okay. My cousin was sitting literally right next to me. As the whole conversation was happening, I literally was sitting there going like, you've got to be kidding me. I'm like, we had this meeting in June, and you're telling me that nothing's been put through? If you had just communicated with me in July, instead of August, waiting until school almost started, that, oh, this is going to be a little bit, let's try to go and go a different aspect for it, I would have called my daughter's doctor and been like, all right, let's go through insurance, and let's do X, Y, and Z of what needs to be done. But the mere fact that there was no communication, I said, I'll check back in August like you told me to, which I did, and now we're at this. All we want is the safety for her to be on the bus, because I don't know what's going to trigger anything. Nothing I know that triggers her is completely different now. So, my problem is that when a parent is going through every single protocol that needs to be done, and then this happens, and then we're sitting here going, well, I'm confused. I did have things that supposed to be done, but yet there's no communication. And then as a parent, we have to sit here going, all right, well, now we've got to go to Plan B and make sure she's safe. Um, it's utterly ridiculous. I really thought this, thought, but obviously not. Um, I've done all the protocols, I've done all the emails. I'm tired. It is utterly ridiculous that school's going to start in September, and this isn't resolved. It could have been resolved with a simple phone call or an update or an email.
Ms. Potter.
Simply let's, all right, let's go up to the doctor, let's do this, let's go this route. It would have been done. Simple, but it wasn't. Now, school's starting, and nothing's resolved.
Ms. Potter.
Because of the medication, if anything happens and needs to be administered by a nurse, not an aide, not a this, by a nurse that's trained.
Ms. Potter, thank you so much for bringing it to our attention. Dr. Robert Tozey will.
Ms. Potter, I'm aware of this situation. I'm not going to speak publicly about it. That wouldn't be appropriate, but I understand there are meetings scheduled in the very, very near future, and I expect that those meetings will clarify any questions that you have, and if they don't, please contact me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Matthew, is there anyone else online?
There is not. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner, he is seconded by Commissioner Bassford. Opening up to anyone here in person who'd like to step up and share their thoughts with
Good evening. My name is Matt Ward, One Soul Ave. I'm going to jump around on a few things, but I'm going to start with by saying, we have really some of the finest vetting for any particular position that's open in the Clifton School District. You know, you don't just land here and then take a job. I congratulate the superintendent and the team for the vetting and the probing, because you have to understand the credentials that are involved here. You're dealing with kids, you're dealing with taxpayers, you're dealing with a lot. So keep that in mind, what I said, the vetting of the employment. It's not the same for the vetting of commissioners. It's a little different, and I say it as a past member and president and council member. So let me explain this. My comments aren't tied to anybody who's on the board now or anybody who was served previously, so keep that in mind. In 1988, Clifton changed from an appointed board to an elected board. Voters wanted to go that direction. First election out of the gate, I think there was 25, 27 candidates running. Tremendous. We stayed at not that high a level, but we came down over the course of time. You're talking to somebody who was elected in that process, just like you folks were, okay? Now, the only thing that's happened, and again, I'm not referring to anybody who's running this fall, so this has nothing to do with people who are running either as incumbents or a candidate, but now we have a situation in which we barely fill out the dance card with people running. The voter turnouts, and I salute the board, because you were the first, the council came second in moving elections from April to November so that we could get better turnout. Unfortunately, minus the presidential election, when you get a spike, when people do turnout, if you look at the voter turnouts in all those other off-year situations, you range from 8% to 14% turnouts. It's not very, very high. The reason why I mention this is that elections don't provide the skill sets that you need to be on a board of education. It's a team. You just referenced committee reports. I'm familiar with them when I served, and it's very important that you have skill sets on the board, nonprofit, for-profit, people who have been involved in education, a whole range of skill sets. It's like a baseball team, okay? If you have too many second basemen, you have a problem. Now, that metaphor may not be the best, but you try to mix it up. Make sure you have a combination of people. Gloria Coloje was the last mayor that had an appointed skill board. In my opinion, in my years of being a citizen in Clifton, there's been no finer board that was ever assembled. The team was tremendous. They had skills, and if anybody wants to check, you can look it up, you'll find it. What I'm saying is, elections don't ensure that you get those skill sets, and when you don't have enough people running, think about it, there used to just be 10 petitions to get on the ballot. It's been changed to 25, but keep that in mind. You handle 50% of the tax bill. On the flip side, to get on the council, you need several hundred petitions, but yet you only handle 25% of the bill. So what does that mean? I get nervous on this, not to say that it's related to anybody on the board now or past members. There are districts in this country in which radical people have been successfully able to get on school boards because the competition wasn't that great. In addition, the voter turnouts weren't that great. So you get people on school boards, and sometimes, and again, this is not related to anybody in Clifton, so I want to make sure I emphasize this, so nobody sends me a Facebook quote, where you see in other districts, people have advocated book banings, diversity programs have been gutted, things like this happen, okay? And when people get voted in, it's very hard to get them out, okay, until you get to the next election cycle. So what I'm saying is, I think this is an issue. You folks have a municipal alliance with your council colleagues, okay? You are going to be here for a certain amount of time as a commissioner, but I know that when you leave, you'll probably reflect like I did, how well did I do, and did I leave it in a better place than I found it? And I think each of you want to do that personally. I know a lot of you personally, all right? And I commend the administration and the team, but I'm going to say this, okay? We need to have some switches made here so that we ensure that the best people, the best minds, the most complex situation that exists in Clifton is being a school board member. I can tell you that personally. It is the hardest skill set to have, because you're dealing with a range of issues that most people have no idea what goes on. It's tough, and you're a volunteer on top of it, plus all the committees that you work on. So let me just say this in conclusion real fast. I personally believe that when time comes, maybe not with this council, but the next council, on the agenda, we look at a mayoral appointments back to the board, however, on one condition, that the mayor is elected citywide and separately by the voters of Clifton. That's a little different than what was done previously. Then that person who runs for mayor will have to address issues like who would be their appointments to the school board. Then we're going to find out how taxpayer money is being handled, both on one side of the aisle, on Clifton Ave, and the other. So I'm going to toss this out. I appreciate your listening to me. I know this may not be the idea that sits well with people who have been elected, but think about it in the terms of the general interest of how you want to leave the Clifton school system and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board?
Good evening, Board Commissioners, Administration, and to everyone else watching. If you're a frequent viewer of these meetings, you probably know who I am, but if you're not, allow me to introduce myself. My name is Elias Ragsdale. I've lived in Clifton all my life, went to school five, still live in the Albion Section for work. I'm a social media marketing consultant, and I work in the New Jersey State Legislature as an aide to Assemblywoman Siobhan De Sumter. I'm involved with various commissions, boards, committees, organizations with the county and here in Clifton, and I'm also a proud graduate of Clifton High School, class of 2024. And I'm even proud to say that I will once again be a candidate, to be a commissioner on this board of education. I'll be number one on the ballot. In my senior year of high school, I had the honor of serving as president of the student body, and since my sophomore year, I was president of the student union. I've always been dedicated to helping those around me and supporting youth like myself because we are the future of the country, the state, and of course, this city. And my love for this city, Clifton, is what keeps me motivated and energized to serve my community as best as I can. I've come to these meetings for years, being involved with various initiatives, and I'm ready to take this step up in leadership, in Clifton and everywhere. It's important that we have new minds, fresh ideas, and new leaders, especially as our city continues to grow and move into the future. As a 19-year-old, I believe my experience can be most used here on the board of education. All my life, I've been in school. I know what goes in, what goes on in and out, what works and what doesn't. I laughed earlier because I saw the IC program presentation. I was in IC, and if everyone's, if anyone's been involved with it for a couple of years and remember the Lion King play, I was Mufasa. It's my hope that I can contribute positively to achieve the ultimate goal where education meets the needs and exceeds the needs of students, parents, and the entire city of Clifton. Through fiscal responsibility, collaboration, embracing new ideas, and the future, communication with students, teachers, legislators, administration, parents, and the greater community, I believe this goal can be reached. As many of you are aware, this upcoming, about this upcoming election and its field of candidates, it's been made so that it's very likely that I will be elected in November. And knowing this, I still will be out campaigning and doing my best to get out to citizens, ensuring them that I want to and will likely be their voice on this board of education, and that I will always work for the people that have elected and trust me with this responsibility. So to everyone, feel free to reach out. My number is 973-943-3607, and my email is ragsdelforclifton@gmail.com, all spelled out with letters. You're welcome to call me, not just at election time, but at any time, and on Instagram or Facebook, you can find me simply by searching up my name. As I said, I want to be accessible and transparent, so as I said, always feel free to reach out. And despite the number of candidates, please remember to vote in November, and I hope to see you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Elias. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak with us?
Keith Bassford, Clifton, New Jersey. Good evening. I recently opened the banners and sponsor signs displayed at the stadium during the July 6, 2025 fireworks display. As stated in the policy, all sponsor-related promotional materials, including banners, signs, digital displays, must be submitted with the application for review and approval by the district prior to use. The banners are located in the basement, and the clerks often assist me in reviewing them. Upon review, I found four banner signs were in violation of your policy 6163.1. Sponsorships, community partnerships, which prohibit sponsorships or promotional materials from businesses or products not appropriate for students, alcohol, tobacco, adult entertainment, or other controversial industries. If these sponsors were disclosed, the approval process failed. If not disclosed, the applicant was in violation. Now, this is where I'm going to give you. Now, this is where I'm going to give respect to some commissioners here, because you give respect, I give respect back to you, so I'm not going to mention your names at all. Request and recommendation, I respectfully ask the board to amend policy number 7510, Use of School Facilities, policy number 6163.1. Sponsorships, community partnerships, two. Require applicants to submit actual visual mockups of all sponsor-related materials, banners, signs, posters, digitals, displays, et cetera, with the application. Clarify that the district may reject or remove any sponsorship sign violating policy 6163.1 with the justification documented and communicated to the sponsor. Establish that materials must be submitted no later than two weeks before the scheduled event unless exception is granted. Include a copy of both policies, 6163.1 and 7510, with all facility use application to ensure applicants are fully informed of the requirements and standards. I will reform my request for these additions to the Chair of the Policy Committee. End consideration. I guess I want to say is, I was at the meeting with this too. And you guys up there, commissioners, you set the policy. Why set a policy when you're going to ignore the policy and not do the right thing, okay? You know, I've been around a long time with this school system, and I've seen many commissioners up here come and go. I've seen some good ones, and I've seen some really bad ones. And touching on Mr. Ward's statement, what he made about being put on by the mayor, that's great. I think maybe it was good back then. But the problem is, you could get all kinds of people up here, but guess what? You learn by going to different courses within the New Jersey State School Board Association. You just don't come up here and say, "I'm a commissioner, I know everything," okay? You could be a brilliant person on the outside and still get up here and not knowing what you're doing. It's education, learn, okay? I know firsthand, 14 years dealing with somebody with this. So again, you know, my outlook is, I think everybody should be able to run. You're not going to be able to pick who you want unless you vote them in, but your education comes after you get in, okay? It's very important in that. And as this policy goes, and I'm going to ask you, even with other policies, if you're going to have policy, make sure you follow through and do the right thing. Because to me, it shows, maybe it wasn't a lack of interest, maybe it was just you forgot about it and everything, but I think you really have to remember what your policies say and how you follow through with them, and do the right thing. So I'm going to ask you to look into what I'm telling you, because I have all the evidence for you in that. And Mike Uche, long time no see. I'm glad to see you back again and everything, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Basford.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the board?
Hello, everyone. I will be referring to documented statements made by public officials acting in their official capacity throughout this speech. These statements were either-
Sir, could we please have your name and-
Is that a requirement or a request?
Your name is a requirement, I believe.
I don't have to waive my Fourth Amendment to speak publicly. Yeah. These statements either recorded with video and/or audio or through emails. My name is unimportant, but my concerns are, I'm here tonight because transparency is not optional. It's a legal obligation for the Board of Education and a moral one. Earlier this year, I submitted multiple Oprah requests regarding the conversion of CLB, a preschool facility in Clifton. The building was repurposed from a high school annex into a preschool. Yet there is apparently no evidence that the legally required renovations were ever made to ensure the space is safe and developmentally appropriate for young children, many of whom have disabilities and are nonverbal. On paper, the school is listed as serving grades pre-K through grade five. That classification alone would allow the district to bypass stricter preschool safety standards like lower handrail heights and age-appropriate fixtures. Now, according to the custodian of records, the conversion involved painting, buying furniture, and buying toilet adaptations, no construction. I've received no inspection reports, no documentation of lowered handrails or modified stairways. Parents confirmed no adaptations were made. Some were even forced to provide their own toddler toilet inserts so that their child can use the bathroom. The district has the money for therapy dogs, but not enough to have bathroom accommodations be ADA-approved and inspected. See work order number 26147. The city's own construction officials stated not all buildings have to be ADA-compliant, despite this facility serving primarily students with disabilities. That statement alone should alarm every person in this room. For seven years, the superintendent has signed documents certifying that CLB meets escort criteria for toileting rooms, criteria that require sightlines from classroom doors so that nonverbal children can communicate their needs. But if no renovations were made and the layout remains unchanged, then the building never met those criteria. That would be seven years of noncompliance and would be a direct violation of NJAC 6A 26-6.3, paragraph H. I've also received credible reports of repeated incidents involving a student with a diagnosed disorder being pushed to the ground inadequately supervised and never protected by formal incident reports. I've requested the incident reports for the last two years and received none. Instead, nurse reports were filed and withheld under Oprah as confidential health logs. There is no policy supporting this substitution. It appears to be a deliberate attempt to avoid public scrutiny. On July 2, I spoke with the board's anti-bullying specialist, Michael Doctor, and urged him to investigate the principal's emails regarding incident reporting. To this day, I've received no update. Additionally, three incident reports were signed by a nurse who does not appear on the staff roster provided under Oprah. I requested those, that's what I got. Either the records are incomplete or care was provided without proper authorization. So given the district's pattern of noncompliance, how can the public trust that either or neither is true? When I pressed for answers, the Board Secretary Ahmed Shahada told me, "There is no obligation whatsoever to continue dialogue with you. We don't intend to respond to anything further." That's not just dismissive, it's unlawful. And when litigation was mentioned, Assistant Superintendent Mark Jangaro responded, "Add it to the list." That sounds like contempt for public accountability. Now, even earlier today, Mr. Shahada told me to contact the Oprah police, mocking enforcement mechanisms and stating Oprah is not our main priority at this moment or any other. So if public records aren't a priority, then who is the board working for? Mind you, Dr. Robitazi, Mark Jangaro, Gina Lightner, and Melody Stepnesky were all present when Mr. Shahada made these statements via email, and none of them objected. But this isn't just about Oprah, it's about IDEA, Section 504, titles 18A, 20, and 29 of the U.S. Code, the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination, and the safety of our youngest learners. I'm asking this board to take action and investigate the legality of CLB's conversion. I'm asking that they review incident reporting practices, demand compliance with safety standards, and above all, treat public records and public voices with the respect they deserve. Now, given the presentation that I've seen earlier in this meeting, I can tell that some children have benefited from attending Clifton Public Schools. I just wish that that benefit would be afforded to all of the children within the district, and with at the very least, equal attention to the children with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the board? Okay, seeing none.
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Commissioner Brunsack, seconded by Commissioner Mejia. Next up is the adoption of minutes for July 24, 2025, to have a motion to adopt.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Siano, seconded by Commissioner Brunsack. Roll call, Mr. Uche.
Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Dr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Mejia.
Yes.
Mr. Siano.
Yes.
Vice President Santiago.
Yes.
President Paris.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, Dr. Robertosi. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paris. Good evening, Commissioners, members of the One Clifton Community. It is great to be here with you tonight. Thank you to all of those who presented on our summer school programs. It's really nice for the public to see all of the things that happened in our school district during the summer, because there's a lot that goes on that most people wouldn't know about. So thank you, Ms. Kusolevich, and your team for putting that together. I can't believe that the end of the summer is almost here, at least for the staff and the administrators of the Clifton Public Schools. On Monday, the 25th, we begin our administrative retreat. So all of our administrators will be back in district, receiving professional development and other legal requirements that are necessary each year. Also, on Monday, the 25th, all of our parents will be receiving their welcome-back letters from their child's principal. Included in that letter will be information on how to access the parent portal. And in that parent portal, you'll find all the information you need for the new school year, like your child's schedule, if applicable, at the middle school and high school level, and busing, if your child is a bus student. It's also the place in the parent portal where you'll check off all the documents. They used to come home in a big packet on the first day of school every year, and you would sign your name to 100 different documents, and now it's all electronic. But please make sure you pay attention to those and read those documents before you sign off on those. New staff orientation is next Wednesday, August 27. I invite those board members who are available to please come by, at least for the morning session, which will begin at 9:00 a.m. Ms. Kusolevich?
Breakfast is 8:30. And the session does, sorry, 8 to 9, and not breakfast, forgive me.
Come by for breakfast.
And there's coffee and water. Forgive me.
Forget it. It's BYOB, it's Bring Your Own Breakfast. Come by around 9:00, unless you really want that great coffee. And then, believe it or not, all of our staff will be reporting back on, except those 12-month employees who have already been here, but all of our 10-month staff will be coming back to school on Tuesday, September 2nd, the day after Labor Day. September 3rd is a professional development day for all of our staff, and all of our students will return on September 4th. Until then, I wish everyone a healthy and happy end of the summer break, and we look forward to welcoming our students back for a new school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robertosi. We're going to have one change in the agenda. We are moving our executive session up. We should be, how long do you believe?
30 minutes of negative 45.
Okay, we'll save approximately an hour? And we will be discussing personnel and legal matters?
Can we pull P9? Yes, I've been asked to-
I've asked to pull P9 for executive session for discussion on- P10.
It's P10, okay. I've been asked to move P10 so we can vote on it now, because we have someone involved who would like to-
I'll second that.
Comment. So, motion by Commissioner Basford, seconded by-
Second.
Second. Commissioner Canova. Mr. Uche.
All right. So we're roll-calling for P10.
For P10 only.
Only, P10 only. Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Dr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Mejia.
Yes.
Mr. Siano.
Yes.
Vice President Santiago.
Um, yes.
President Paris.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Listen, I have a lot of thank yous, but the first one, I guess, is thanks for not keeping me around for executive session. But first, thank you, Dr. Robertosi, our assistant superintendents, the rest of the upper administrative team, for really seeing something in me that at times I may not have seen, and for trusting me with this position. Thank you, President Allen Paris. Thank you, Vice President Anthony Santiago, and the other members of the Board of Education. Over the past five years, I've had the incredible opportunity to work with the CHS team of administrators, led by Mr. Hamda. Them, along with the CHS staff and the Clifton students, have made that time for me incredibly memorable and really the highlight of my career. I got a huge shout-out to the Clifton Admin Academy, myself, Robert Bertolini, Megan Zanola, Joe Mencken, consider ourselves really the first cadets. And over the past several years, the Admin Academy has churned out successful administrator after a successful administrator. I want a big thank you to the school 11 staff, many of them are in the back over here. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had a staff get-together, it was a breakfast. I was asked what kind of turnout I thought that we would get, considering that it was dog days of summer, it was on July, I think, 30th. And I said, maybe, I don't know, I was hoping 20 or maybe 25 people would show up, and we ended up getting over 50 people. And that just shows the incredible commitment that this staff has to that school 11 community, so I have to thank them for such a warm welcome. And then finally, to the school 11 families. I'm excited to laugh and be silly with those children there, but I'm more excited to see them grow and learn. And again, so thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations, Mr. Walker, and thank you, staff, for being so supportive. Okay, now, we will go to executive session. We will have some personnel matters and some legal matters discussed. It will take approximately one hour, and action may or may not be taken.
We're also asking, I'm asking for number nine to be pulled to be discussed in exec session.
Yes.
Thank you. That's P9.
Any, okay. Thank you.
I got an hour and one minute, Mr. Parrish.
Well, I said an hour, didn't I? Everybody laughed at me.
You by yourself?
There's a toasty in here. Mine's whole thing.
Yeah, right?
And I've got it green. When I remember, I'll try it.
Oh, wow.
My brain doesn't remember that sometimes, so.
Understood.
If you come upstairs, there's a box on my desk.
The hammer was cold in there. My hands are ice. Let's get past this.
We're missing two.
We got it tomorrow.
Nine thirty. Let's get through this. Let's bang this out, people.
Danny, like, he's sitting here. No, I'm trying to figure out who else we are missing, though. Look, there's another one in the chair. Sorry.
Look, there's another one.
All right, welcome back from our executive session. Mr. Uche, roll call, please.
Ms. Basford.
Here.
Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova.
Here.
Dr. Danny.
Here.
Mr. Mahia.
Here.
Mr. Ciano.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Paris.
Here.
We have a call.
Unfinished business, any unfinished business? Okay, singing on, moving on to, I need a motion for under B, education administration, items number one through sixteen.
Motion, second.
By Commissioner Brunsack, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Mahia. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Uche.
Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Dr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Mahia.
Yes.
Mr. Ciano.
Yes.
Vice President Santiago.
Yes.
President Paris.
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Thank you. Under C, personnel, motion to approve items number one through forty-six.
Motion.
Motion by?
Second.
Commissioner Mahia, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Brunsack. Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Uche.
Ms. Basford.
Yes, I'm accusing myself on number nine.
Mr. Brunsack.
Yes, everything except P thirty-eight abstain on my name only.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Dr. Danny.
Yes, abstain P thirty-eight.
Mr. Mahia.
Yes, and abstaining on P thirty-eight, my name only.
Mr. Ciano.
Yes, abstaining on P thirty-eight, NJ SBA workshop, my name only.
Vice President Santiago.
Yes, abstain on P twenty-seven and P thirty-eight, my name.
President Paris.
Yes, but abstain on C thirty-eight, my name only.
Mr. Paris, I have to change my vote, also include my name only on thirty-eight, I apologize for that one.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Basford.
Yes, and also me.
Okay.
Got it.
Next, under D, finance facilities, looking for a motion to approve items one through twelve.
Motion.
Second.
By Dr. Danny, seconded by Commissioner Brunsack, any discussion? Commissioner Mahia.
For use facilities, I see that some of them are from the city, are they getting a bill with it as well?
We will be invoicing the city, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Uche.
Ms. Basford.
I'm voting yes on everything, I'm accusing myself on number eleven, I am in conflict with the ones that have to do with the Clifton Recreation Department, I serve as a commissioner, so I'm in conflict.
Mr. Brunsack.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Dr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Mahia.
Yes.
Mr. Ciano.
Yes.
Vice President Santiago.
Yes.
And President Paris.
Yes, but under D eleven, abstain only on items ending in eight sixty-six, eight seventy-one, eight seventy-four, eight seventy-five, eight seventy-nine.
Motion's carry.
Thank you. Under executive session, motion to approve items two through three.
Motion, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ciano, seconded by Commissioner Brunsack, any discussion? No, we can't have any, that was from executive session. So, Ms. Uche.
Ms. Basford.
Yes, I'm accusing myself on number three.
Mr. Brunsack.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Dr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Mahia.
Yes.
Mr. Ciano.
Yes.
Vice President Santiago.
Yes.
And President Paris.
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Under section F, addenda, motion to approve items one through three.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ciano, seconded by Commissioner Brunsack, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Uche.
Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Dr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Mahia.
Yes.
Mr. Ciano.
Yes.
Vice President Santiago.
Yes.
President Paris.
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Thank you. Okay, and board member comments, and I believe Commissioner Basford would start this evening.
I have not much to say, I hope everyone had a good summer, please be safe still, we still have some days left, and I'm wishing the staff, administration, the teachers and the students a safe return, please, everybody out there, watch the roads, watch your driving around the schools, to the parents, park and walk and bring your kids in, please don't triple park on the roadways, it really makes it dangerous for anyone trying to traverse the roads, but welcome back to school come September and have a good year, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Basford, Commissioner Brunsack.
Thank you, Mr. President, good evening, everyone, want to give a big shout out to Josiano for hosting the Power of One School Supply Drive, Power of One is a wonderful organization who will be distributing these school supplies to those in need in this city, Clifton Public Schools start two weeks from today for all of our students, and I hope you all enjoy what's left of your summer, finally, I want to wish everybody a wonderful Labor Day weekend, thank you for your time and God bless America, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunsack, Commissioner Canova.
Good evening, it's funny, we only have two weeks left, and I keep kidding around with my kids, telling them they don't have much of a summer left, but they're already in cheer camps and all different things, but I'm just looking forward to this new year, this is the first time I'm going to have three drop-offs, so that's going to be interesting, the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school, but no, everyone, I just want to wish a happy start of the year, and that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Canova, Commissioner Dr. Danny.
Thank you, President Paris, I want to say thank you to the presenters who presented the, all the programs that we are doing in the school, it was really nice to see the high enrollment numbers, it seems like the kids really enjoyed it and benefited a lot from the program, so thank you to all the staff and everybody who was involved to make that happen, Happy Labor Day, and also, I hope all the Clifton School District employees, a nice welcome back, and I hope the summer was refreshing, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Danny, Commissioner Mahia.
I first want to congratulate all the summer programs, watching all those slides with all the great photos, and many of the things that came out of it, it looked fantastic, I wish they had that when I was there, I'm a little jealous, especially the music part with Mr. Leschwitz, that is a really great opportunity, on August twenty-fifth, we'll be hosting School Supply Drive over at Me and Miami, thirty-nine Harding Ave in Clifton, recommend students come out, we have a bunch of supplies to go around while supplies last, so please come out for that day, and I'm looking forward for a great year this upcoming year, hoping, you know, more championships by our fall sports, and a lot of great things coming from the sport, thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Commissioner Mahia, Commissioner Ciano.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, big thank you to our speakers, and Janina and all the presenters for the insightful summer programs overview, your dedications are tremendous assets to our district, I had the privilege of attending the Ecuadorian, Pakistani, and Indian flag raisings, while my work schedule does not allow me to attend every event, I make it a point to participate whenever possible to celebrate the richness of our diverse community, I went on a webinar today, it was a holistic approach to school safety hosted by NJ SBA, it covered a lot of critical topics we're all facing today, for my fellow commissioners, the webinar is available on the website, school safety continues, I know, to be a top priority for all of us, I'm thrilled to share the success of Power of One's School Supply Drive, we served as a drop-off point and hosted an event for this mission, that was an honor, I'm proud to report, they've collected one thousand and fifty backpacks and counting for students who need them the most, this effort highlights what makes our community truly special, I can't believe Mark's not here for this one, on a lighter note, August is National Dog Month, I bet you all didn't know that, given our district's love of dogs, maybe next year, we could do something commemorating the month, I myself have and have had many dogs my whole life, and I couldn't ever imagine not having one, August is also Black Business Month, I encourage everyone to offer extra support to our local black-owned businesses, with the new school year just two weeks away, I want to wish all students, staff, and administrators a successful and productive year ahead, I'm confident this upcoming class will achieve great things, lastly, have a safe and enjoyable Labor Day, the unofficial close to summer, take care, stay safe, and be kind to one another, have a great evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Ciano, Vice President Santiago.
Thank you, President Paris, thank you to all of our staff for your work with the summer programs, they're awesome, thank you to our students who attend those and their families who send our kids there and support, we had our summer graduation, which was another good event, and I'd like to thank all the staff involved in that, that's a newer thing, but, you know, I'm sure they have work to do in the summer, but I appreciate them organizing it, we had students crying, parents crying, and it was just, it's a great event, flag raising, so many, so many we've attended, I just wanted to say that I think it's great that a lot of our commissioners go out and attend these flag raisings to support, you know, our students are often there, their families are often there, we are part of the community, so there are so many to attend, but we, you know, I'd like to see when I go there, we can't make them all, but usually there's one of us there, and it's awesome, this Sunday is Ukraine, I believe, at one o'clock, and then, yeah, Kim Castellano and the Power of One, amazing, once again, I think this Sunday will be the Sixth Annual Family Fun Day and giveaway of the school supplies, this time's going to be at Randolph Park, which is Botany Village, right next to Sacred Heart, thank you to her for all she does for our school, for our students, but also for seniors and others, she does so much, and it really is an example of the power of one, the impact you can make, so thank you so much to Kim, good night.
Thank you, Vice President Santiago, my thank you to the summer staff for their hard work all summer, and for the enrichment they've given our students, I know my granddaughter attended the ISEE program, which she absolutely loved, again, our thanks to them for their hard work this summer, enjoy the rest of the summer, students, family, and staff, it's only less than two weeks away, have a safe rest of the summer, and we look forward to you coming back to the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. New business, anyone?
I have new business, I'd like to, sorry, bring something to the Education Committee, I want to start looking at trying to get an adult evening school going, maybe ESL first, and maybe a couple of classes here and there, but to bring community back here into the school systems is so valuable, that's how I met people when I first moved to Clifton, and we have a lot of people in need, and if it could be a lower cost and we can make money out of it, it could be a revenue generator as well, it's, we're automated now, it's computerized, it's not taking checks, making people walk online, you could do registration from your home on your computer, but I'd like to look into it, at least we can get maybe a couple of schools rolling, and start really bringing us up into the next level, other towns do it, they're successful, why can't we? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Basford. President Paris. I'll make sure it gets on the next agenda.
Yes, yeah, Commissioner Basford, great idea, I thought, you brought that up in the past, no? Like, what happened?
We have a quasi-program going with a grant, I believe, and it's about to run out, or?
So, we've been, we've been doing an ESL evening program, we brought that back using a combination of Title I and Title III funds, this year, we were hoping to add some more like parent university stuff, again, it's like parenting and education stuff, but I think what you're looking is to expand it to, you know, many more types of courses, so the grant funds that we have can only pay for those types of things that align with the grants, but a paid program could theoretically, you know, work for the different types of courses.
Guitar, music.
Yeah, something, you're looking for more expanded, like it used to be, all right.
Auto mechanics, I had a fix, I learned how to change the oil, I didn't know how to golf, and I took the class, and I bonded with my father after my mother passed, and that's how I spent my time, the last ten years of his life, learning to golf and getting corrected, really in a harsh way, but it was something that was valuable to me, and I know there are people in the community that are always looking for something to do, and this is a revenue generator, if we do it right.
I mean, even, excuse me, even if it's not generating revenue, if we could get something the other that breaks even, that would be okay, too.
Sorry, sorry, President Paris, if I'm not mistaken, it was like through the rec before, right? And they used to charge?
It was always done through the school system.
Oh, okay.
It was, it was run where, the problem was, if you had a class of thirty attendees to come in the class, it wasn't done, it wasn't automated, so the, they would open it up, you'd have to go stand online out by Clifton High, you get into the class, and by the time registration happened, the classes were starting the next week, they couldn't see if, like, oh, Mr. Brunsack is doing the mechanical end of it, or accounting, and he only has five students, we can't afford to keep that class, we have to cut it, they had to have it, so we would lose money because we didn't have thirty, we only had five, so being that you have different things to do, and you can really automate this stuff, we can make it an advertisement, there was one book, that was it, there was no other way to get it out there.
Commissioner Mahia.
I wanted to bring something back to policy, bringing a, you know, metal detector or checking bags, you know, I know when I first got sworn in, someone messaged me saying they were going to shoot me, and, you know, last year when I was campaigning, I also got a few people saying they were going to shoot me as well, and so, if we could have security personnel, I believe most of us feel a lot comfortable checking bags, I know they do that at various other meetings, too, you got to walk through a metal detector, get padded down, open up your bags, I mean, most of us don't even bring stuff to the meetings either way, I usually bring, you know, my bag with my laptop, I'm okay with having everyone check through it, I have no hard feelings about it, and I doubt the community would as well to keep everybody safe, but that's just something I want to bring to policy, so we can put it for our upcoming board meetings.
Is that policy, or would that be security and safety first?
Probably both.
Okay.
All right. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mahia, Commissioner Ciano.
I just want to figure out the banners at the events, who's deciding on the banners? Because I saw that, too, I wasn't at that event, but there were four banners that should not have been up at that event, based on the policy that we just passed, like, three months ago, so who's enforcing it? Do we get an email saying, hey, these are the banners you want to use, or is that administration, just let's make sure that doesn't happen again, because that was actually one of your ideas, when we mentioned the one brewery, we were like, that shouldn't be here, so if we could just stay on that, that would be amazing.
Mr. Paris.
Okay, yes.
President Paris, I just want to add to what Joe was saying, and what Mr. Basford kind of said about maybe, you know, having them, you know, provide an image, or something like that, that they will, because it's easier, you know, sometimes, I guess I can see where you're overlooking something, and it looks good on paper, but if you see the image, you might be like, oh, wait a minute, that's a little bit more, you know, so maybe something like that, providing an image, you know, or whatever would be standard, yeah, that's why I was saying, to put a policy to, you know, I thought that was a pretty good idea.
President Paris.
Yes.
So, yeah, so, I mean, a lot, right, there are a lot of events, that, I think, was a city event, right, so whether we have an image or not, I think we're going to have somebody who's got to be there and look around, right, because I can send you an image, but what I bring in is, might be something else, so I don't know if that's maintenance or security, I mean, somebody's going to have to be double-checking what's on the grounds.
And forgive me for my perhaps ignorance, doesn't our policy just address school events?
That's the impression.
In district events, or does it?
No, it doesn't.
Because that, that makes us the police of every event we authorize in the use of facilities, and I don't know who's, who's doing that, you know, as Mr. Santiago's suggesting, who's, who's the person that's going to police all these events? So, I want to clarify what our policy says, and if it needs to be changed, that's fine.
It doesn't address, it just says, it just says the applicant, it says, you know, whoever's sending the thing in, because I read it, too, regardless of use of facilities, to your point, Richie, I think that we should put, change it, I want to bring this to facilities, and I also want to bring it to policy, that we actually change in that use of facilities, that they have to have two of our security guards on staff at every event, if it's an outside vendor, one, because the custodians are doing their jobs, they can't be running around, but if you have two of our security specialists, it will help control things, and with, you know, events going on, you see these videos, the game's getting out of control in other districts, I think it's just, it has to be part of the requirement, and whatever the cost is, the people that are renting them have to wear that, thank you, I wanted to bring that up, thank you, Mr. Mahia.
President Paris, yeah, that's a cost, and obviously, we're going to have to pass that cost along, we're not going to, I think today, we approved a church, no, nothing about the church, but to that point, right, it's all these different vendors, I don't know what's up at the church event, at the high school, and? Yeah, and they've been with us for years, according to Dr. Robert Tosi, so it's just, we'll have to pass that along to all of these, it could be a nonprofit, it could be a church, but somebody's going to have to police looking at that, and we got a lot of events.
Okay, anything else?
I mean, how many times has this policy been changed over the past year and a half?
Several.
Okay, so, so I don't understand, I mean, how many more times are you going to fix, how many times more times are you going to? I mean, how many times has this policy been changed over the past year and a half?
Several.
Okay. So, I don't understand, I mean, how many more times are you going to fix, how many times more times are you going to change it? How many more times are you going to have the sign police or whatever? We do the best job we can, the sheer amount of resources that we spend, if you say something, one of the commissioners are there, send us a text. Even Mr. Ciano, he's very, you know, he's very, all of us are very easily reachable, you know what I'm saying? And we could just pull the signs, is that satisfactory? I mean, I think that's a reasonable request, no? We're not allowed to pull the signs?
I don't think we're, no, we really want to be the people pulling signs off of, I don't think we're the enforcers of that.
We're not allowed to act individually for the board. That's the problem.
This is what drives me a little bit crazy. It's the same thing with the signs that were removed before. These were legit sponsors that paid, that paid our booster clubs, they gave them a lot of money for the booster clubs or whatever. Now they need to find a replacement for that. So, how picky do you want to be? It's subjective, there's a gray area, right? What's inappropriate, what's not? I get it, no tobacco, no alcohol, so what, even a restaurant, too? If they have some mocktails or something like that, that's the thing.
They can still get the same sponsors, they just have to tell us who the sponsors are, so that administration will give them approval, and their signs can go up. The issue, we had to form the policy in the first place, we didn't have any policy on it, people were just putting signs up on Board of Education property and getting money for that. You know, our property is not for rent, for you to make money on signs. So, we, obviously, we want to be able to allow sponsorships for our school organizations, right? Now we just have a process to do that. It doesn't prohibit any of those sponsors coming back, putting a sign up this year. They just have to tell us who the sponsor is.
And it all goes back to what the sign says. It could be really anything that's going to get approved, but I want to say the same thing I said last time, that you all laughed at. If it's a lawyer, hey, did your kid get hurt on this field? Better call Saul, because guess what, I'll sue him for you. You don't want certain wording on a banner. I don't care if a restaurant that serves alcohol does it. Hey, Mario's, Mario serves beer, they could sponsor it, but you just don't want like a vape shop or a freaking Marlboro or something like that, going in there and putting up a banner for kids.
While we're on this topic, I know we were told a while ago, we're not allowed to donate to give our names like on things. Is that still applicable, or can I donate money and get like a banner?
This will be your family name, right?
Yeah. Because I know that was told to us, we couldn't donate.
You can pose the question to legal and see what their recommendation is.
There are some issues now with the ethics opinions, what you can and cannot sponsor and be part of and donate, so we would have to look at where that falls into the air.
But if we were to sponsor something, because this came up with Botany, I remember the discussion with that, like, somebody sponsored it, but it had to say like the blank family, it couldn't say Commissioner this.
Yeah, it shouldn't be as your board.
Right, but your family could sponsor whatever you want. Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Paris.
Commissioner Basford.
See, the beauty of the Constitution was formed by plainmen, farmers, that were, the one beauty of it is they left it open to be amended at any time. That's policy. And the Constitution keeps on getting amended all the time, so policy gets amended until we get it right. And this policy needs constant attention and constant revisions until we check every dot, across every T and dot every I. So, if it takes a hundred more times to get it right, we got to do it a hundred. I love policy, I love the process of policy. And we are actually having a very good, healthy discussion about it right now, which is what we're supposed to be doing, so the board is working in the right direction. So, thank you, everyone.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner.
I'll second that.
Mahia, seconded by Commissioner Ciano. Have a great week.
Great job tonight, have a good night.